Welcome, everyone. I would like to call this meeting to order, July nineteenth, two thousand twenty-one, six thirty P M. If everyone could join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Roll call, please, mister.
Brad Crandall.
Here.
Don Fortin.
Here.
Sarah Jones, here. Craig Corpola. Dana Wells Jenny.
Here.
Jeff Wolfersberger.
Here.
Tim Woods.
Here.
Thank you, ma'am. I'd like to remind everyone, norms of collaboration. One point oh five addenda. Does anyone have anything to add to tonight's meeting?
I'd like to subtract the closed session for the, which is...
Five point oh nine.
Five point oh nine. And as the table till August night.
Second that. Thank you, sir. Whenever you're ready, ma'am.
Okay. Don?
Yes.
Sarah, yes. Dana?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Five point oh nine is removed. Comments from the public? Thank you. Consent agenda, three point oh one, two, three, four, five, six, and three point oh seven. Anyone have anything on that? I would like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
Thank you, ma'am.
Sarah, yes. Dana?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Five point oh one, bond resolution, ballot language. Mr. Simmons?
I have a text to your agenda. It's the bond resolution, which is the actual language. Jay is here, in case there's any questions, but it is the steps in which the actual language that goes in on the actual November... I forgot the date.
Hmm? Second.
November second? What's that first Tuesday in November? I forgot the date already.
It's November second.
It's November second.
November the second. This is the actual bond language. Has to have approval and action by the board.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? Can I get a motion to move forward?
So moved.
Motion to approve the bond resolution? I'll second that. Whenever you're ready, ma'am.
Dana?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
That is approved. Five point oh two, school calendar. We have a correction to be made if I'm...
That is correct. The, um, um, calendar that was approved by the board showed that Thursday, June the second, would have been the last day for students, and after going back with the count, the, it should be June the third, which is a Friday, which would be, make it a hundred and eighty days for students. The, uh, uh, union presidents have already had this conversation with cabinet, and I've already signed off with them that was waiting for the board's approval.
Thank you, sir. Any questions moving the last day of school from the third to the fourth?
From the second to the...
Second to the third, excuse me.
I make a motion to move the last day from the second to the third.
Thank you, ma'am.
Second that.
Jeff?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Sarah, yes. Dana?
Yes.
Revision approved. Five point oh three, before school and after school. Uh, we touched on this a little bit last week. I have invited Erin Lane with Calhoun County, Calhoun County. Calhoun Christian, I'm sorry.
Battle Creek Christian.
Battle Creek Christian. Uh, here, uh, in the attempts that, um, we could possibly use her to, to move forward in this or, you know, and/or answer any questions that we may have, um, if that's something that, that we may be interested in bringing back to, to, uh, the district. Um, so first question, Erin, what would you need, um, from Penfield District? What would you need from us for you and your staff to provide this service for us?
Yep. Well, first up, um, obviously space. So it's been, in previous years, it was housed at Purdy and the gym. So just continued use of that space.
Do you ever come up to the mic?
Oh, yeah. Let me hear the mics. I don't think people...
Just blowing it. No, hey, good thing nobody can see you.
Test, test.
Thank you, Tammy.
All right. So to say, to repeat what I had said, um, obviously the space. So it had previously been housed at Purdy and the gym, so just continued use of that space. Um, there was also a storage cabinet or closet that they had used. So that was something that Jane and I had talked about us being privy to. So obviously, we would need a place to store supplies so we were not carrying them back and forth between the two locations. Um, whether that be the existing, I believe it was like a rolling cabinet. So whether it be that existing cabinet, or if we, we need to provide our own, that's fine as well. But we would just need a space to store that. Um, access to the janitorial closet, um, it was my understanding that the, the janitorial staff would come in after us to clean, but if there was anything to happen during that before, after-school time where there's nobody on site. So like if someone vomits, or, um, you know, if there's a blood, or pee, or, you know, any of that stuff, um, that would need to be cleaned up, um, we would need access to that closet with the cleaning supplies. Or, again, a space where we can store our own. Uh, building access, um, a key, which I believe I still have, I was given that last year. Um, and then also, like, I would like to install a FOB system, and that would be, that was something we kind of talked about last, or two years ago. That was kind of at our expense, um, if the school doesn't have plans to put that in. But that just helps with parents coming in and out, and obviously staff too. So, um, let's see. Um, the continued bus schedule was in the past that was set up. That shouldn't be a additional cost to the district, but it was children, you know, parents dropping the kids off at Purdy. A bus that was already coming to Purdy to drop kids off at Purdy, then loads kids that are going to Dunlap or North. Again, this bus is already going to Dunlap and then to North. So once they get to Dunlap, the kids either stay at Dunlap, or they switch buses to a bus that's already going to North. So there shouldn't be, to my understanding, there should not be any extra bus runs or expense in that, um, area. And then what else do we need? Just positive support from the district. You know, if we were to come in and run it, then I would want it to be a good relationship. Obviously, there's been some... That would just, I'm just, I would request that.
Yes, ma'am.
To tread very lightly. Um, we would continue to offer the teacher discount like we did last year, even though we housed the program at our location. Um, we were continuing to do that. And then offering the families, um, I, I know something that wasn't offered in the past was offer our services on half-days, or those now, those late start days that have been added to that, and as well as snow days. Um, the snow days, we would house at our main location though, just for staffing issues, because I'm not sure how many kids we would have. Um, but that's probably where we would house it. Um, so the half-days would more than likely be there at that location and then, or late start days, and then the snow days at our other location. Um, and then content, I don't know, this one, I, I believe there was DHS families that were served previously, but we would continue to do that as well. So families that are on public assist, or childcare assistance, continue to offer that. And I believe that's it. There is, there was a couple things from the last board meeting that I just wanted to touch on. Um, the Shared Service Alliance, that was who this district used for billing. They outsourced that. That would not have to be brought back. So if we're, if we were to run it, that, that's a community organization. I know Abby Green was a part of that. That's probably why the district participated with them, but it would not need to be brought back. Um, so I believe that's it. I have other information if you have other questions.
Any funds, any costs to our, to the district other than...
No. So that was, no, just the use of the space. Um, but, uh, I, I pulled some notes, like when I previously responded to, um, the email that I received two weeks ago, um, I was on vacation. So now I was able to, when, now that I'm back in my office, kind of pull up some, um, notes from the past. Um, we would keep the hours the same. Uh, the rates we changed to kind of align with ours already that we had set. Um, for the district, there wouldn't be any cost. So I'd gotten, um, you know, I've got the revenue for the last three years that Angie had given me when we were exploring the possibility, as well as the personnel expense and the supply expense. Obviously, it'd be our staff, so we're paying, um, personnel expense, and then obviously, we would supply the supplies. Um, so as far as I know, no, no extra cost to the district.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else with any questions?
Erin, I'm sorry. Um, what, what are the hours? You said normal hours, I'm sorry.
Um, they opened at seven and closed at five thirty.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions.
Sir?
So, um, you are a nonprofit, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. There's, um, uh, since this is a day-to-day operation to where it's the decision that would have been made by superintendent for programs that come and go in the district, added or subtracted. Is the board looking to make this a directive that aligns for need to make sure this program is in play? And before that answer comes from the board, uh, I do need to ask, Ms. Lane, have you had any of our staff that has been, um, not pleased with your service or with the company in which for the childcare center?
Are you talking about previous parts, or staff?
Yes.
Yes, and you know that. Um, so back when Jane Hoddick approached me about taking over the program, some of the current staff that, that worked under her, um, I was bringing them on board, paying them the same, um, which is more than a typical before-and-after-school program, uh, staff are paid. Um, some of them felt like, because I was adding the half-days, adding the snow days, they weren't, it was going to require them to wear smock with our logo on it. Um, little things like that that they were not happy about. Um, and they felt that they were not included in the transition talks, but being an administrator to another administrator, you're, I mean, you're not going to discuss everything with all the teachers. Um, so they felt like they, um, were excluded from that, or were not privy to that. So, yeah, some of them were unhappy, and they chose not to, that they were not going to work in that program anymore. And, um, yeah.
Thanks for sharing.
Um, Erin, what are some of the typical numbers that we've had in the past in this program?
Sure. So according to the numbers that I'd received from Jane, the, so this would have been the twenty nineteen, um, twenty school year, there was, they were licensed for fifty-two, and they had approximately fifty before-school kids and thirty after-school. With three teachers before school and two after school.
I've got a question.
Sir?
Um, can you tell me, can you explain the, the legal structure? So you guys are a nonprofit, and this service would be under your nonprofit?
Correct.
Wouldn't be any business from the school. You would just be housed in our facility?
That's right.
Okay, so your liability...
Yes. So that was one thing. We had to talk to our insurance company. Like our annual insurance would increase five hundred to seven hundred dollars a year, even housing it at the school. Um, so...
Okay. And then, so the, the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, it looks like the Purdy after-school had a profit of just under thirty-six thousand? Am I reading that right?
For the nineteen twenty?
Yeah, nineteen twenty.
Okay. So that year, as we all know, was not completed, but the, the last numbers I received, which might be inaccurate, I don't, I don't know, I can't, I don't remember, this was, I don't remember what month I received them, maybe May. Um, so it might, so I've got a number of thirty-nine thousand revenue, the personnel expense of twenty-nine thousand, um, just, just under thirty thousand, and a supply expense of just over fifteen hundred.
Luckily, we have our account manager here.
Perfect. I think, Tim, what you're referencing is a report that, um, Jeff received, in that, um, they didn't make thirty thousand or thirty, whatever that was, thirty-four thousand in that one year. That's been kind of a carryover. They have made money in some years, and then we just kept it for that program. So if they got to a point where they needed some equipment or needed something up, you know, they had that money to use for the program. So that was kind of like the running balance for the course of the time that they ran it. It wasn't just one year.
Continue, okay, okay. So is it fair to say the program operates at just over cost? I mean, is there a profit here that we need to be concerned about, or is there, is this just?
We wouldn't want to do it if there was no profit, to be honest. Yes, there is a, I mean, I'm showing a profit of, um, probably, I mean, but the twenty, if I'm looking at the twenty eighteen, nineteen year, it brought, it looked like, you know, it about broke even. But the year before that, there was a profit of probably about seven, it looks like seven thousand. Um, and the, the most recent year, you know, just under ten. So I think it, but then there's, you know, there was admin cost in there. So like obviously Jane Hoddick got paid above and beyond her contract for that. So...
So I think it, but then there's, you know, there was admin cost in there, so like obviously Jane Hoddick got paid above and beyond her contract for that. So, you know, this, this has all that personnel expense in there as well. So for us, our personnel expense actually might end up being lower than what the school is paying for it.
That makes sense. In, in the contract that we have, is there a whole harmless agreement for, for us? Has anybody talked about that yet?
In what contract, with our?
The school would have a contract with your organization, right?
Yes, we would have, we would, yes, I mean, we would have something like that. That's would be something I would, why we have our own insurance in place.
Okay. I'm good.
So question of where do the kids go like from this past fall when we did the whole program?
Well, a lot of those kids weren't in school in the beginning and then they, it was hybrid. So the ones that did utilize before and after school, like I said, we housed them at our facility or they went to Learning Zone, another local childcare center or they, you know, I don't know, parents, a lot of parents still were not working. So, I mean, we saw a decrease in our regulars and then, then a lot of new kids too. But the thing is, is we in years past, you know, I, our school age program has been pretty much at capacity and I'm pretty sure, I mean, I, correct me if I'm wrong, but talking to Kim Wolfensberger, theirs has been too. So there, that tells us there's a need in the community still.
Do we have any data that supports that? The number and the age of kids that we have that are utilizing the programs?
That are utilizing the two facilities that are available?
Yeah, saying that we need to have a third facility because those numbers are, and the reason I ask is because, yeah, there were a lot of kids that stayed at home before, we're still trying to get kids that are going to be coming back to school. Is that going to be a need for a before and after school program? Which was some of the things that I was trying to pull together when the decision was made. But if there is a true concern that there is going to be an influx of numbers of parents and kids saying, I need this before and after program, then I, I would think we need to bring some type of data to support that.
I can tell you from what I've seen on Facebook and our Panther Den, there's a, there's a outcry to bring it back.
I would go by this number here, Jeff, that said that we were licensed for 53 and we had 50 in the morning and 30 in the afternoon. And those daycares were still here at that time. So I would say that that says something, in the morning, it was to capacity almost.
Well, I mean, the risk is all yours, right? I mean, we're turning the lights on, you're using our building. I mean, are you willing to take that risk?
Correct. So to, to answer your question, which I, I wish it was asked before that and we would have had time to prepare and get you a, you know, a physical number, but you have literally two owners of the two facilities that we have here in Penfield sitting right in front of you and they're both saying that they're full. I, I wouldn't have wasted the board's time in bringing this to the board if there was not a need. There's absolutely a need. They're, they're full. They're full. So, I mean, this is, yes, the, the social media, you know, outcries of, you know, are we gonna have before school and after school have, have, you know, grown a lot? You know, a lot lately. I know there was some conversation last year, everyone kind of just accepted the fact of, of COVID, can't really have it, okay, fine. But yeah, I mean, and especially if we get, you know, into some situations, you know, like last year where somebody may have to go to, you know, some sort of a virtual or something like that or can't be present in the school but aren't quarantined, they've got no place to go. You know, and you've got, as far as I'm concerned, two of the best facilities in, in, not even Battle Creek, Calhoun County, that are, that are willing to, you know, yeah.
Support.
And we're still talking before and after school?
Before, before school and after school. And, and I just want to reiterate again, the, the, let's say fluctuation in the, in the schedule of the late starts and the half days and, and stuff like that. You know, I, I think as a student, you're, you know, you're all happy that you get to go to school late, you get to sleep in and you get a half day and well, I mean, this, mom and dad have to work.
Yeah, me and daddy have something to work.
I can, I can tell you that as soon as our schedule was released to the social media, everyone's like, you know, how am I going to get to work? Now I gotta plan nine?
Six.
Six delayed start days for, for K5. What am I gonna do, you know? Parents have to work, you know, and there's, there's no place for them to go. There's no place for them to go.
Can I ask Erin a question about that then with the late start days? Would you have the capacity to take kids that aren't normally in your before school program? So just for families that have an inconvenience on those six days?
Yes, depending on space, yes. So we have children who are signed up for a set schedule, they, we know that they're going to come every day, Monday through Friday before school or maybe they're Monday, Wednesday, Friday before school. But we also have kids that are signed up, what we call as needed. I'm not sure how Kim does it at the Learning Zone, but we have, we have a huge gym. I mean, I can put a lot of kids in the gym, so that's where we'll put our schoolagers if needed. So we always say, yes, we have the room. I tend to overstaff that room for those days specifically, you know, snow days, half days, because I know I'm going to get an influx of kids.
Thank you.
I, I got one question and it might just be, or you were talking about the, the teacher discount. Does that extend to any employee for the district, for, for us? I mean, our bus drivers are some of our staff.
I believe we were honoring it as it was, so it was teachers and secretaries and pair pros. So like building staff, I believe.
Is there room for some of our others on the discount?
Potentially, but we'd have to talk about that.
So yes, it, it does more or less boil back down to, or come back down to you, Mr. Simmons. With all this and it wouldn't cost the, the district anything besides maybe some utilities. Is there a reason why we, is there a reason why you stopped moving forward? Something in particular?
There was, there was this staff around that came out earlier last August before school started, after we said we weren't going to do the program, we would revisit in the spring. And Ms. Lane, sorry, you kind of shared that to where, you know, the board now knows that there's some staff that's probably not going to be too happy if Ms. Lane brings the program back into the building. But then again, I play percentages, not games. If there's a percentage and that percentage is more so, just like we did with starting school with virtual, the way we did with the board, then if that's the percentage that we need to go with, then we need to go with that percentage. So I would support doing that based on the fact that the board knows that it's a decision based on need and based on the percentages to say that, yeah, we might get a, but that's, that's what I do, I, I work with staff on that. But you think, most likely they won't be employed with Erin Lane anyway, because they've already stated that and sent emails and communications to me, but I didn't want, I just wanted her to share what her thinking was on that, what she has.
Fair enough. So is this something that you're willing to move forward? And, and I, I just want to, any viewers or, you know, the board, I just want to reiterate too, the reason why I'm kind of focused on Erin is one, she's already started this process, the licensing process takes a while. She had stopped it. Seems pretty confident that we, that, you know, she may be able to pull it off before the, before the start of the school year. So she has already, you know, put a lot of time, effort, money into this and I think she's more prepared than even we would be if we, if we housed the program in ourself. So that's, that's why, that's why bringing, bringing her in. So I guess I would ask, you know, Kevin, if, if you're willing to move forward with it, I think we can leave it in your hands. You know, otherwise, you know, as a board, we could, we could always add it to the calendar.
Yeah, I would, I mean, I strongly suggest that we move forward with this. I, I think there's definitely a need in our community, just from what I've seen, the outcry on, like I said, like on social media. I mean, we've based other decisions we made based on what people have, have stated on the Panther Den. I, I think that obviously I, I was a strong believer in that facility. Both of my kids went through Battle Creek Christian, I'm a big supporter of Ms. Erin, as my kids still to this day call her. As a, as a, as a junior and freshman, my kids will call her Ms. Erin till, till, till the day they die. So we're, we're, we think it's a great, a great particular place and I think that it would be a, a great move for our school.
And any questions on RFP, we already checked on. There's no need for an RFP because it's not a cost. Yes, with the timeframe, I'm basically asking the boards for support and, and Kevin's support to move forward with, with Erin at this point. I think in, in all proper manner, in professionalism, we should open it up, you know, next year and either see if, if Penfield wants to do it themselves or, you know, a non-traditional RFP process and at least, you know, invite some other facilities, you know, next summer that, that may want it. Or, or help us out and at least, you know, entertain some, some other offers, but I, Erin's fully prepared to, to move forward, so.
We need some kind of a motion for this or?
Does, is everyone in support of Kevin moving forward?
I, I'd just like to add two things to that. We gotta have a contract. You know, that contract at minimum has to have a whole harmless for us.
Everything we do goes through.
Okay.
Goes through train.
And, and I would try to negotiate and the, you know, expand the definition of teacher for the discount, see how that goes.
And it has to come back to the board for approval.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Because it's a contract, it's like a third party, even though it's nonprofit, it still has to come back.
Okay, fair enough.
Which is also just being transparent, so yeah.
I, I just want to say, I think it's really important that our children do have somewhere safe to go in the mornings and in the afternoons while their parents finish up their workday or start their workday. And, you know, I appreciate Ms. Lane going to the extra effort to make this happen for our students and I'm in support.
I thank you, I hope that you two can be in touch here very soon and Ms. Lane, I hope you have the confidence to, to move forward with the state and licensing and let's work together and make this work.
I'm just going to say one last thing. First of all, thank you and I'm, I am going to, hopefully Kim doesn't get upset, I don't think she will be, but speaking on her behalf as well, being two large quality centers in the district, we feel, and this, I'm sure Kim is the same way, is, you know, kind of look at, like, we're an extension of the district, you know, in a sense that we're providing care and early education to children birth up to 12, you know, where we house these kids, not only at school, but upcoming Panthers as well. So we take that very seriously and what we, we're, you know, very passionate about what we do and so is our staff, so.
We say we get them for the first five years and then hand them off to, to Penfield for the next 12?
Right.
Yep. I thank you very much for your time, effort and thank you for coming in. All right, 5.04, return to school plan, 2122. Mr. Simmons proposed his plan last week, we discussed it. Does anyone have any, any questions, thoughts, anything they want to add, remove, like it the way that it is? See a bunch of head nods. Are we, are we liking the way that it is?
I like it, I make a motion to approve it.
Why, thank you ma'am.
Nice talking, pay a motion.
Why, thank you ma'am.
Okay, Tim?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Sarah, yes? Dana?
Uh, yes.
Jeff?
Yes. Return to school plan is set. 5.05, superintendent formal update.
Are we gonna put that back to school out on social media?
Yeah, I think Kevin, Mr. Simmons, you need to message or mention doing a, a video or an email or?
I'm gonna be working with Ms. Tim tomorrow for getting that message, Facebook, district website, an actual email blast, but then a video to sum it all up.
Awesome.
Don't want to mess with anybody's day tomorrow, so we're gonna do it to where it's like about dinnertime tomorrow when it comes out. However, any of our community that's already watching will already know. So this is the formal update and what I will do is I'm going to actually share out this piece and then after, I've got some additional information for our board and community. This formal update from the MASB, just a reminder, at three months, there was an informal update. At six months, which would have been in June, but it's now in July, is the, where we went from the 12th to today, because there was a couple of information that came to me, a couple of emails, where superintendent provides an update on progress along with the available evidence prior to convening at a public meeting as we are now. The board president collects the questions from board members and then he shares that with me, superintendent, prior to this meeting. And then we discuss the progress and make adjustments to the course of the goals if needed. So this is a, going to cover each one of those goals. There are four goals. The first goal is also aligned with the strategic plan. The superintendent will create a virtual alternative learning program for K-12 students by completing a series of research-based analysis of the virtual programs over the next 10 months and present the findings in November. That create, the actual program is also still being, being researched. So in February, I made the presentation to the committee as a whole, that meeting, they recommended that the K-12 virtual programs, that I would bring it in April and in April, discussed that at the committee of the whole. This is really a review for the first part. It's the presentation of whole, which said that we had that in April, where we had Battle Creek School Districts, they were Lakeview, there was Battle Creek and Harper Creek, talking to them to see if there may be some type of teaming that we can do with our students, but we still get paid with utilizing their programs. So then, here we are in July, the presentation of the whole, which would have been last week, which again was, since there was the Michigan Health and Human Services and the Calhoun County Health Department recommendations, since they've made those restrictions and lifted a few, then it has changed what that would be based on what I bring to the board to say what we can use in the fall. Plus, now that we've said there's no virtual learning for the fall and those parents who have a concern and a true need that they're contacting, then I did not further that investigation, even though in November, I will bring you the research to them, data on that of all those programs. Goal number two was superintendent will create events and opportunities to increase engagement with senior citizens and business owners over the next 10 months and present the findings by the November final evaluation. April, we created an after-school schedule for open walking of the middle school hallway to square. And the reason that was put in place during the winter when it gets cold, I was told that there was a number of senior citizens that used to be able to go to the middle school. I was told that there was a number of senior citizens that used to be able to go to the middle school, which used to be the high school, and walk the square. And so now we're working with our, uh, with Dewey, making sure that we're not in there while they're trying to clean, at the same time, if they are, we can still clean around them. So, we have that schedule available, ready to be implemented during the winter, uh, when the cold starts. Uh, cleaning of the building occurring during the summer, which is why we're not opening up, hopefully they'll go out and use the track. And as we see so many of our senior citizens now, they're actually walking up and down Penfield Road. A couple are actually utilizing the track. Create a business appreciation day to recognize the local Penfield businesses for their support for Penfield schools. That's going to occur in the October. And the reason that's in October is because of the recognition we're going to have during our community welcome back event. We're gonna call it the, uh, community celebration. Or you can just call it a Penfield party. I have more on that as I get into the later pieces as to how we go about recognition for the support of our senior citizens for Penfield schools. Work in progress along with the, uh, bond work. It's actually gonna be a matchup that's going to occur during that time. October, November athletic event passes for Penfield senior citizens at the middle school and high school. There, I'm working with our athletic director Brett Steele to make sure that we're not only recognizing them here before school starts, but that we say we have opportunities as we go through the year. Now, I will say at the Penfield party and the community celebration, senior citizens, most places, if you're fifty-five years or older, I think we need to use that same thought process, even though we know there's some with fifty-five to sixty-five saying, "Don't give me any tickets, I'm gonna pay for mine." Share those with the older sixty or above. And then there's some sixty-year-olds would say the same thing. But, uh, senior citizens, we're saying if you're fifty-five years or older, is how we're gonna go about senior citizens. Uh, work in progress to identify sponsors. You will see for our community celebration, we're gonna be asking businesses, if they donate, then we're able to subtract from what it is that we're actually putting together for this actual party. Meaning, the party is actually paid for, but if businesses support by giving, say, twenty-five, fifty-dollar donation, they put their sign up, we're able to say, "We appreciate you," because later in October, we're supposed to recognize them and say that we appreciate them. Even if they don't give, we're still going to reach out to businesses because we want them to know we appreciate their support. Some of them give, like, to the high school yearbook or the middle school yearbook, so we still want to recognize them. But, there's a cost for this celebration and I'll be sharing that in just a moment. Goal number three, superintendent will design a backup facilities plan with the district administrative team over the next ten months and present the findings by November final evaluation. Actually, we have that in place already. I actually gave you the draft copy of the backup facilities plan that Dewey is actually working on, should I say, Dewey and his team, with making sure that some of those things that are on the list, with the parking lots, with the actual signage. Uh, we talked today about the idea of finding a company that has, we call it a side push hall, so that we can, uh, mow down the front of those bushes that's right out in front of North Penn and then level off the ditch that's right out here in front of Penfield Road up and down. So, that is all part of the actual plan. I shared that back in April. We are in July, as we move forward with that summer work, which is also in progress. September presentation as committee of the whole regarding implementation and budget required. If there are some, uh, things that come up that are repaired, that we need to come back and say we need, there's a, uh, extra cost, then we're gonna come back and share that with the board during that time. Even though, you know, I'll be having a conversation with Angina and Dewey saying we do need to take care of. November's budget approval for implementation of the backup facilities plan. That gives us an opportunity to say, if we got that triggered to where we actually have a number of our students to return and we're above what we were budgeted for the actual, uh, budget at the hearing, then we'll be able to come back and ask that question without saying we wanna eat it all up for facilities, but we could use the support. And the third goal, superintendent will design, eight, whoop, I just went backwards, sorry about that. That's the same goal. Should be on goal number four, superintendent will create a schedule of teacher talks with the district teachers and staff to gather quantitative data with a research-based method over the next ten months and present the findings by the November final evaluation. March, all of those were held, those teacher talks. I'm actually going to go into more detail because I had a couple of board members ask questions and actually give you the dates when those were held. Uh, they were held virtually, they were in small attendance and groups, and most of the people who attended, the question was, are we coming back in person, or are we gonna do the virtual, or do we have to do both? And at the time, I told them, I truly believe the way the state is moving forward with lifting restrictions, that we would be back without masks and without the restrictions. Most questions of the group, well, I just mentioned that, was, would it be virtual learning opportunity? May, uh, also had another group there, it was in May, were those who missed in March. And some of those were actually, uh, in person by the time I got into May. September, we'll have teacher talks. November, presentation to the board regarding those findings for those teacher talks for each month. That are, that is the first part of this formal update for the July twenty-first. I can go back to any of those slides, but I do have a more detailed piece that I need to share. And I think it'd be most helpful for our board and for our public. This one, I do not need to. So, this is a part of, for full transparency, I will address the questions that are received from two board members. And these, as you know, were intended to be presented in a timely manner, so that they may be addressed at the twelfth board meeting. Yet, we're doing it today. I remind all the board members that questions should be aligned with those goals, those four goals that I just shared. However, as they were forwarded all members of the board, the email information, the community will benefit from this information. So, I will address them. Let me say before I start, people tend to speak negatively about things they don't know or don't understand. And once they do, they recognize opportunities to celebrate rather than disparage, as I will share with you. The first of these concerns was about teacher talks. Teacher talks was something I personally created in order to establish visibility in the district, provide a direct channel of communication and build a collaborative environment centered on mutual trust and respect. This is something no other superintendent in the county does. And from some teachers that I've met outside the district, they haven't even seen their superintendent, maybe once the entire year. These teacher talks did not occur during the first semester only of my first year. I'm not sure where this data was collected, possibly a teacher who missed these scheduled dates. I don't know. Uh, if that's the case, I will be submitting Google forms to determine who plans to attend, who plans to attend but cannot meet at that time, who is choosing not to attend. But really, it should truly be something voluntary and should not be forced upon any teachers in this way, which I will not do. Uh, but, if it provides more data for the board, then all, by all means, I will need to do so. Here are some dates that, which I conducted teacher talks that occurred during the second semester. These were scheduled during the month of March and located on the calendar. March the sixteenth, one-thirty, Purdy Elementary. March the twenty-ninth, two-thirty, Dunlop Elementary. March the twenty-fifth, one-forty-five, with the high school. March the twenty-second, one-forty-five with the middle school. And March the eighteenth, two-forty-five with North Penn. And one-forty-five with the Transportation Department. That's correct, we added them in. And food service is gonna be another that will be added. By the way, Transportation Department was the only one that was in person, happened to be out in the parking lot. Want to say yes. This item of concern was a part of my goals. This second item related to the reference of the office staff as a cabinet. This issue is one that I clarified to the previous board, but all new members, some new members could benefit understanding the physiological approach to communication in central office. Let me start by saying, central office is still central office. That has not changed. The physiological approach that empowers the staff in the central office has the term cabinet in its origin, meaning that professional executive council, where advisors need for collaboration. It is research-based in a sense that I serve to have power with the central office, not power over central office. Having power over central office is most commonly understood as a superintendent having the dominant control over decision-making and does not create an atmosphere of mutual trust. Power with is shared power that grows out of collaboration and relationships, mutual respect and empowerment. In the past, the directors were not included in decision-making. Instead, they met one-on-one with the superintendent and collaborate, uh, had a collaboration between departments lack transparency and a power over format. By approaching the staff as a collaborative group with shared ideas and treated as professionals, empowers the staff and provides opportunity for growth among all professionals in the central office building. Forming a cabinet is necessary to lead to collective action, increase morale, empower decision-makers and overall, treat our staff in a manner that they deserve as professionals. This type of approach is most effective in gaining trust and moving the district forward in a more cohesive manner. Now, this item does not pertain to my goals, however, can serve as positive evidence for my evaluation. A third concern indicated that I am the first superintendent in Penfield history to hire an administrative assistant. Yes, I am. And this board can celebrate this hiring, as my pursuit of providing speed and efficiency of communication is distributed especially at the time where communication was vital. There was an administrative assistant. Most school boards, ours included, value this opportunity as administrative assistants provide this enhanced communication. Collaborative research from local school districts where used to superintendent contract was used as an example, I would do the same. As you can see, Battle Creek, Lakeview, Harper Creek, Marshall, Hastings, and Olivet, all have administrative assistants. Bellevue, student population of six hundred, has an executive administrative assistant along with Coldwater and Homer. I am unsure why in comparison to our area school districts, I of all superintendents in the county, although I could go further throughout the state, would be expected to function without one. The reason for hiring in the first place was due to supporting human resources through the district and maintain a more efficient central office staff that was in place with the previous superintendent. And I alone, with all the superintendents in the county, celebrate the opportunity to improve our district in this manner. This issue does not pertain to my goals, however, can serve as positive evidence on my evaluation. I attached the Battle Creek Schools, Battle Creek, Lakeview, Marshall Schools, Harper Creek, Penfield, also included Olivet and Hastings is also mentioned within that documentation to show the number of people that they actually have in central office working in, in assistant, administrative assistant. Fourth concern was hiring of seven administrators in that we should, quote, "Look deeper"
Mr. Simmons, Mr. Simmons, can I ask you, what does this have to do with your updating your, your goals? Can we, can we keep the topic to the goals, please?
Yes.
And the questions that pertain to your goals?
Yes, so, two board members sent these questions, which meant they were looking for answers based on a formal update.
Totally understand, we send you questions all the time, they don't need to come to a board meeting. Can we, can we keep the questions and answers that pertain to your four goals?
So, go, you know what, I'll go through and those that do pertain, and then you can read.
This is your goal, yep, thank you.
I can do that. I can do that. This one? Uh, wow, that one does not. This one does not. This one does not. However, this pertains to my evaluation, but this one does not to my goals. This one does not. This one does not. Just a second as I go through here. This one does not. This one does not. Okay, I am into the second board member's questions now. This one does not. This one does not. Almost there. That's a no, that's a no. No, no. Actually, then, the rest of them, even all of those that were sent to me from that second member does not. But there are answers there.
The number two question from the second board member.
Number two? Just a second, I will be. The update on work in progress for the Penfield, yes, that one does, thank you, it does. The, um, the update of the work, of this work in progress regarding the Penfield Community Celebration that involves and recognizes senior citizens and the plan that's in place was intended to be presented during the June twelfth update. However, uh, August the ninth is the scheduled date for that community celebration. August the ninth from four to seven o'clock. Uh, Ms. Haudick, Jane Haudick, has agreed to help make this the best Penfield community celebration ever. And I said, so, I'm trying to think when the last one was held.
It doesn't matter if there was a last one, we're moving forward in the district.
Thank you, Ms. Fortin, you are absolutely correct. And this is why it is going to be the biggest Penfield party ever. So, we are going to, uh, we're working with, it's called Fun, Fun
Services.
Services, Fun Services, where we'll have some of the, uh, bouncies and we'll have, uh, quite, it's gonna be a carnival-like feel. Uh, we're going to ask that we have senior citizens and those who want to bring senior citizens from our community, we'll have a tent, it's a cooling station, to come over so that we can give them a t-shirt with the Penfield Panther on it, saying it's a great day to be a Panther, and allow them to know we support them. And then talk to them about what's coming up, that's right.
Yeah.
What's coming up in the fall and the winter as far as those tickets for athletic events. But, thank you for sharing it. We do have a rain date. If it rains on August the ninth, it's gonna be August the eleventh. Because August the tenth is the registration day, so we don't wanna.
I think the main reason for that question is, you know, I haven't, I personally haven't heard of any dates or seen any dates put out there.
Good question, good point, now we're there.
So, it's great to know.
Yes.
August eighth.
August the ninth from four to seven o'clock. We thought enough time for people were getting off work, they wanna bring the kids in, those who are, um, bringing them in for the fun. And as I mentioned earlier, we have a cooling station, because if it's just humid and hot, we wanna make sure that we can still keep people cool.
Sounds great.
Where's it gonna be held at?
Well, right now, we're planning to use the staff parking lot in Dunlop Playground and Dunlop Parking Lot over by the middle school. We're gonna shut that off and be everything in between.
Very nice. And we got a plan to get this out to the?
Yes.
Okay.
All the parts, the same way that we get ready to tell them we're returning to school, it's gonna be in there also.
I, I very much appreciate everything, but do you realize that that day is a committee of the whole meeting?
I think we can start the committee of the whole later that night? No, I did not. At the time, I was thinking it was three weeks and that we try to have it before registration, so, yes. That is the committee of the whole.
Be, be mindful that, that's the first day of all fall sports too, so.
I thought they started on August the second.
Ninth.
Is it ninth?
First day of all sports, go back to.
And we were gonna be asking coaches and teams to help with some of the events.
There's gonna be tryouts and everything.
Yep.
So, FYI.
We need a centralized calendar that has all the events.
Yes, mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yep.
We need that.
I, I would think that we're gonna run into a lot of dates if we go any further, deeper into August. So, if anything, we could possibly use the rain date, but right now, August the ninth. Matter of fact, I'll put out the emails to the board. Matter of fact, I'll put out the emails to the board and say that August the 9th is tentative if we wanna move it, move it to the 11th, and we just make the 11th the date. Because, yeah, that, not only is there a meeting that is the start of fall sports, even though I thought it was on the 2nd.
As, as much as I'd love to offer to even move the committee of the whole, I, I, yeah, I think we should look for a different...
Just make the 11th. Just make the 11th.
Look forward to it.
And then I'll put in a rain date. So, August the 11th is the date, and I'll put in a rain date, but that information's gonna come out to, uh, all the community.
Awesome.
Any questions? And Dawn, thank you for pointing that out, because that was one, is there, was there any other one that I missed that I just kinda went over that also pertains to the goals? You are absolutely correct, that was, uh, goal number three.
I, I thank you, sir. Uh, moving on, 5.06, uh, school board meetings, uh, being livestreamed. Um, there was a request last month of stopping the livestream, the vote was tied, so chose to bring it back in the hopes that we would have an odd number of board members, but, um, is the request, is the motion still there to remove it?
I'll remove my motion that I made after reading the feedback from the community. I know there was concern besides myself on that, so I don't wanna speak for them, but I will speak for myself in making that motion.
I believe I seconded that, and I will also agree.
So we don't, if we're not going to change anything, then we don't need to do anything. The original motion was tied, so therefore it, it failed. It did not pass. So now we're, I, I've just brought it back again to, to try to finalize it, so...
If you're seeing more support...
If, if we're all happy with continuing the livestream, then that's a done deal. Uh, 5.07, custodial service RFP. We had three companies last week. Uh, Mr. Simmons, is there anything else that you wanted to add, or do we for that matter? Did you have anything else you wanted to add to anything?
Um, just, uh...
Got, got a prize box?
Yeah. That'd be easy, no. I, I do not have anything to add except for answering any questions that you may have. Then I know we have representatives that are also here.
I see that, I see that. Um, do, do we have any questions? Okay. Do we have a, does someone have a preferred that would like to make a motion to approve that contract?
For custodial?
For custodial.
I actually preferred High Tech, I preferred their presentation, I, uh, I preferred the, I, as somebody who does a lot of these type of presentations for RFPs, and I, I was moved by the way they presented, I like, um, I like the relationship that we have established with them, um, uh, and it's not just because they're the incumbent, I, um, I just, I like the relationship we have with them, I liked their genuine attitude, um, just the, just the, the way that they, um, they came across, I just, uh, even though it was, wasn't the lowest bid, I kind of feel like you get what you pay for. And was it two or three years that they said that they made some adjustments and they didn't even get, I can't remember what it was?
Didn't ask for any additional?
They didn't ask for additional, was that, was that two or three years? And I just, I think that we've built a, a, a great relationship with them, um, I, it, it's, it's like, I mean, custodial services, when you outsource it, it's, it's like, it's the devil you know, and we know them, and it's, we know what kinda job they do, they do a great job, um, I mean, we don't know about the other two, um, I, I, I would never put anyone on the spot who happens to work in other buildings, we've seen other people, but the, I, I felt, I just, I just liked the way that they presented, I like the, um, I just, I, I, I liked the vibe that I got from those two ladies.
I appreciate that.
I also appreciate, I prefer High Tech as well, and, um, I liked the, you know, the, the big difference in the three bids was the hours, and they've lived the building and the work and knew that those additional hours were necessary to get it done, you know, it wasn't just a calculation in a book, it was what they'd experienced. And I also liked the action they gave us of having, um, the onsite leadership, um, because I think that keeps things running efficiently, and that's probably the closest we can get to having it like in-house like we had before.
I would agree with that, yeah.
I, uh, thank you for sending the numbers for the in-house cost and, you know, looking at the reason to outsource, really the only reason is budgetary, right? So, but looking at the projected cost for us to go in-house, I don't think it's feasible either, you know, we would, it would cost us more. You know, I, I agree that High Tech, they're here, they've been here for five years?
Five and a half.
Five and a half years? You know, so they, they've assimilated into the community now, you know, they're part of the community. Uh, but there does have to be an answer between, you know, there's, rough math, it's, High Tech is $300,000 more over three years than Auxiliary. Um, but I think Sarah kinda spoke to that when she said they've actually lived the building. So, you know, it's, it's tough for a subcontractor to get into a contract, find out they underestimated it.
I see it intended to be made to, to either one of the other contracts, I agree.
So I, um, even though it's not just going by the numbers, as Auxiliary is $300,000 less over three years, I think High Tech's number is a real number, they know what it's gonna take to do it.
Fair enough.
So, do we make a motion?
So this is a three-year, but they had, correct me if I am wrong, we have alternate one, alternate two, alternate three? I'm sorry, alternate one and two.
Before you go on, three years starting in December, because their contract's not up until December, am I correct?
Cause we do have an extended contract with them now.
So, so this starts in December, okay, just making sure.
So we have the attachment, alternate one is what we just, um, adjusted the budget to, to have one cust- one custodial personnel at each building all day long. So that, so alternate one would reflect the path that we wanna go.
I'll pull that up.
Alternate one is the one that had the summer carpet cleaning, alternate two is the one that included the other person.
Yeah, alternate two is, keeps current staff as is.
Correct, that's one district custodian. I, I said three, I thought there was three.
Yeah, moves Rick Holmes to one day as it is due. Sorry, it's got my chicken scratch all over it.
I have it right here, it says, uh, number one includes summer carpet cleaning.
So, do we, do we need the, do we need the carpet cleaning? Is that something we, we...
We do get it done every year.
We hire, we hire it out, or we normally do it ourselves?
Yeah, no, we, we fire it out to, uh, SerPro or Vale Tech, people that exclusively do carpet cleaning.
Okay.
What's the cost of carpet cleaning? I don't know.
Thirty-two-ish thousand dollars, I'm assuming? Not that high?
Not off the top of my head, no.
So I would make a motion, our attachment last week, I'm not, I'm not reading the same in this attachment, but our attachment last week was alternate one includes summer cleaning, has the three years, totals 2.4 million, that's for the 16.8, or excuse me, 134 hours a day. Am I reading this correct? Cause the, the attachment that we have today is not matching.
I will send you the attachment from last week, because it was, uh, all inclusive.
Let's just make sure we're...
Yeah, yeah, I hear you.
Or would you rather have the dollar amount approved?
I think we could just approve going with High Tech.
Fair enough, okay.
Then Kevin can go into further discussion on the plan that we have.
Okay.
I think that it's...
Fair enough.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think we do have to be careful, cause the proposal that we got sent is 14,000 higher the first year, and then a couple thousand higher than what we had last week.
This, this is different from that?
Yeah, what I got emailed to me is different than the printout we had last week. As, as long as I'm reading it right, I don't have the printout from last week. But last week, the printout for the first year was 1 million...
Two, no.
Now it's, it's 1 million 44,000.
360, correct.
Yeah. But last week it was 1 million 30,000.
No, that, that was a, that was a top one minus carpets.
That's not the alternative.
That was the top one minus carpets.
Okay.
Okay. So...
So if we just need to make a motion, who we go with? I'll, I would make a motion that we, uh, use High Tech Building Services as our custodial service for the next three years.
I'll second that.
Three and a half years, sorry.
I, I think we should put some kinda cap on, I mean, like, we gotta qualify a number. I mean, if he's gonna go into negotiations...
We, we have a budget number that we've already approved, so we can't, yeah. Is that, is that fine?
Yeah, as long as, as, as long as it's concrete, you know?
Yes, we have, we have a budget number that had, you know, that has our custodial services already wrapped up in it, that's our budget that we just approved, but, yep.
Okay.
Yep. Our money lady won't let us overspend, so, I promise.
Do we have a motion on the table to go with High Tech?
Motion by Dana, seconded by Sarah.
Okay, Brad?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Sarah, yes? Dana?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Brad? Oh, or Tim?
Yes.
Motion passes, we will continue with High Tech? 5.08, transportation RFP. Uh, let's just go right to the point, does anyone see any need to outsource?
No.
No.
I...
No.
Okay.
We need to stick with what we have, we need to support them, we need to market to get drivers, we need to support them, we need to support them, we need to support them. Like, I can't say that enough, as long as we support them and show them how much they are loved and needed and we can, I think they will do everything for us, our, our students. When I say us, I mean our family, Penfield family.
So we're still short three drivers, and I agree, we're still short three drivers?
Yep.
Wanna, um, Elway or contract through the ISD for the special needs runs, is a
State that again.
There's three?
We're short three drivers?
Right.
Okay.
And there's three special needs runs?
Okay.
That could be, uh, outsourced for the ISD with Dean or, and then be able to have three more drivers.
I give Michelle a chance.
Yeah, I think if we show support and believe in them, they can do it, that's gonna be more appealing to attract drivers to us, too. If, that, we're showing that we could lean towards outsourcing, that's not gonna want anybody wanna come work for us.
Better go work, find our three drivers that we need, okay?
Sure they can.
While we're on that, I'm gonna grab our buses that we've already approved. Do we have any clue when those vans? Vans, 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 vans?
October.
I, I didn't, why did you put that?
There's so much that's delayed.
I emailed to ask where we were and that to the dealership, and they said that they were even behind, I don't think it's even ordered to, the order is not gonna be open till August now, and they said with that, they had issues manufacturing with everything out of paper, but like with the chips and all that stuff that goes into the cars, man, well, all that stuff, so that's really delayed them.
Oh, yeah.
So we've, we've got... I'm sorry.
Sorry, that's all the information he's given me at this time.
So we have to, like...
You have a wonderful mechanic that keeps us on the road.
Oh, you...
He saved our district tons of...
So I'm just saying, we have the, the two 10-passenger vans coming that we feel that would assist with those, the smaller runs and keep the bigger buses back in district to help you, the special needs runs.
Okay, thank you.
To where you don't need to take a full bus to, to Marshall and, and so forth, so we'll, it'll in turn bring some full buses back here and have options when they don't start at zero degrees in the morning or something like that, so...
Yes, nice.
We're, we're here to help you guys and...
We appreciate all of you.
Thank you.
Go at it, keep going at it, thank you.
We did a fine job last year.
Yes, we did.
Did.
Considering...
Are we still on the transformation, uh, the transportation, oh my gosh?
Uh...
Need a motion for that?
There's no action to be done if we're gonna stay, if we're not moving it.
Can I just, can I just state that whatever we can do to, uh, to do more marketing to get drivers, I don't know what we can do, um, but signs, signs by the corner by McDonald's where everybody else puts their signs.
We mentioned parking a bus at Family Fair or whatever.
So we, we touched on that, um, I would let Michelle, you know, kinda give her free rein and let her...
Well, we brainstormed, we were, we tried to get that last...
I very much appreciate your input, but this is not an open, yep, I can't, I can't do that, I can't do that. So we have fully stated in support of, of bumping the, the, uh, sign-on bonus to match other districts, we'll just say that, um, pulling a bus up to, uh, we have, um, some local businesses right up here on, on M66, um, maybe with a, get a, you know, banner made or whatever, but we... Transportation, you have our full support, let's, let's go to work, let's find our three drivers or maybe pull three drivers back in that would like to come back to work for us and let's get our kids...
Make it happen, yeah.
Get our kids to school, thank you. Uh, 5.09 was removed, uh, 510, uh, we had kind of an issue, um, when we, uh, Ms. Green resigned, uh, we had a, um, motion done out of, um, out of the agenda, we had a motion made and voted and everything, and it was not on the agenda, so I just wanna make it official, so...
I motion, um, Dawn Forten as our vice president.
And I, and I actually seconded it, so I will second that motion.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll start with Dawn?
Yes.
Sarah, yes? Dana?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Thank you, now it's...
Thank you.
Now it's official. Mr. Simmons?
We have, uh, if there's any questions, we do have Angie in here to answer any financial reports, or do you just move to the next one already?
I haven't moved yet, I was...
Yeah, only if there's questions, it's usually the same, uh, we have each month that we have that financial expenditure report. If it's a legal document, it needs to go out there.
Yeah, looks good.
Anyone have any questions? 7.01, comments from the public? Do we have any public now? Did we bring paperwork? Public comments? The forms?
You wanna hit bring, it's in my, uh, comments, our new administrative assistant, so that it gets back on board.
On behalf of drivers...
Your mic's not on.
...of the drivers.
It's not on. Don't doubt her.
On behalf of bus drivers, I'd like to thank you for your support, uh, it means a lot to us.
Thank you for supporting our drivers.
This field, the way that it is, is probably just, I just cannot imagine going through and having some other group come in here to, to start trying to cart kids in here, it's just, I appreciate it a lot.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? All right. Superintendent comments?
Yes, I have, uh, two tonight.
Sir.
Um, next, on August the 9th, I'll be presenting a personnel report with the new administrative assistant and new high school principal, I have them both here today, and the administrative assistant, she's not ready to have words or make any comments, but... but, uh, Colleen Welp is gonna be our new administrative assistant. And our new high school principal is going to be Tony Hutchins. If, um, if you would like, even though I would just give Mr. Hutchins, uh, two minutes, like his, uh, public comments, so he can speak to our public as to why he is so excited about doing this work.
Your comment sucks, and sir, sir.
Take a couple of minutes of my time there, Mr. Hutchins, please.
This is on? Well, um, first and foremost, uh, thank you for this opportunity. I have, uh, been thinking a lot about this the last few days, and I've been blessed so many times in my life, and there's a lot of times I haven't deserved it. But, um, this is another blessing that I must have done something really good, because, uh, this is a great opportunity. I said that to Kevin last summer when he hired me, I appreciated the opportunity and went right to work. And, um, I'm starting my 18th year as an administrator, 26th year in education. And it's taken me this long to find my dream job. It's just a great opportunity, I've known since the day I set foot in Penfield High School that it's been the right fit. And I've been in that situation before and it's taken me just a short amount of time to figure out, oh boy, was I wrong. That has not happened. That my pride for Penfield grows more and more every week, every month, and every kid that I meet. And, you know, as I thought about it initially, I said, no, I like what I'm doing, you know, we don't want two people in one building trying to figure out their job. But I knew, I knew good and well I could do the job. And as I thought about it more and thought about the opportunity and thought about the staff and the support systems that are in place. I mean, I first focused on the shoes that I have to fill. Tom Faver was probably one of the best administrators I've ever worked with, and I learned a lot from him in a short amount of time. And that can be intimidating to fill those shoes, you know, but I have the same experience he has. Um, you know, I, maybe I don't have the same knowledge, but I'll get there with it. Um, so, to have this opportunity to grow even more at my age and in my, point in my career is, uh, like I said, is a blessing. And, and I, I, I'm so appreciative for it, which means that I'm gonna go to work for you. And, and it starts tomorrow, I gotta find my replacement, so... That, that'll, it'll start, I'll hit the ground running, and I'm gonna work my tail off for you. I'm not gonna say there won't be mistakes along the way, but I've, I've made enough in my career to know that this too shall pass, I will recover. And, um, we're gonna make Penfield High School the greatest place to be, we really are, together, so thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Hutchins. Have, uh, I'm as excited about his coming on board as he is, and we wanna make sure that our staff and our students know it's one thing to have a familiar face, but to have the experience as a flagship of the district that we... That's all I have for this tonight, sir.
Thank you. Uh, board comments?
Tony, if you think that becoming the principal gets you out of being in charge of that Panther, you're wrong. Okay, okay. I, I, Jill and I put Tony in charge of making sure that Panther didn't get lost again, and, uh, that was, uh, in the, in the spring, and, um, and we thought that would, that it would be good in his office, so, uh, that was kind of our little inside joke there. Perfect, more space for the Panther. Congratulations and welcome.
Anyone else?
Well, I don't wanna be, you know, cutting the summer short, but really now is the time we gear up and get ready for our new year, and I'm really excited for some of our positive changes, and I'm looking forward to the kids coming back five days a week. And so I hope everyone saves good and healthy.
I'm just glad to see faces. There's people like, I don't even know who you, oh, oh, yeah, that's, that's you, you wear the white mask, yeah.
You have the Spider-Man one.
Um, but the only thing I have, uh, junior football sign-ups were tonight?
Tonight.
Tonight and tomorrow?
Tonight, tomorrow, yeah, I got invited to come help with the registration.
Check out the Panther Sports page, or the Junior Football page. Um, I think that's all I had. Anyone else? I wanna thank all the board members, Mr. Simmons, for a very efficient, quick meeting. We jammed right through it tonight. I appreciate everyone coming out and joining us, and, uh, let's go to work tomorrow. With that being said, I motion to adjourn this meeting.